This is the Town of Irving Planning Board meeting for November 18th, 2021. And I will share my screen. We're using GoToMeeting and during the public hearing portion of this, you'll be asked to raise your hand if you would like to make a comment. There is a raise your hand tool here and you can also type questions into the chat. If you're calling in, I ask you to mute yourself because because it's a public hearing, you're not automatically muted. So just make sure that you are muted until it is time to talk. And Mike, take it away.
So I'd like to open the meeting at 7:10. We have Deborah Smith, Sunhee May, and myself from the planning board. Unfortunately, Moonlight Davis called me today and said that due to health issues, he's going to have to resign from the planning board. So he'll no longer be with us on the planning board. He'll send a letter of resignation to us in the select board. Janice, I'm not sure if she's joining us tonight or not. Hopefully she will. So the the agenda for tonight, we have at 7:15, a public hearing. So I'd like to just begin maybe with the mail until 7:15 and then go to the public hearing and do the minutes after the public hearing. If that's amenable to everybody.
Sounds good.
Okay. It seems like it's the same type of mail. Orange has a new cultivating manufacturing marijuana facility going in on 158 Governor DeCaucus Drive. Gil has the disc golf going in at the old Oak, I think it was the Oak Ridge Golf Course. And Gil also has a another down by the gas station and the main traffic, like they're going to be putting in a recreational cannabis retail establishment where I don't, if you people have driven by it, it used to be like ATV type of place there. So. Well, that was that. And that didn't take very long. Can we start the public hearing early or should we wait until exactly 7:15? Okay. Wait till 7:15?
Yeah, we should wait.
Do we have time to go through one of the minutes of the meeting? We've got a couple of minutes.
These are the August 19th meetings that Sunhee had sent over. I had a few comments, if that's okay, a few just edits. What was that?
Yes, please.
The A and R on Care Drive and Highland Ave. If we could just say, it says Mike makes the motion for the A and R. If it could just say makes the motion to approve the A and R for both of those, so that it's clear what the motion is, that would be great. And then down here on the second page, I think you just accidentally typoed Janice's name. There's a B where it should be an N.
I don't have any other revisions. Do you, Deb?
No, if we're good, I will make a motion to approve them as amended for the minutes of August 19th.
I'll second that motion. All in favor, we should say our name and how you vote, please.
Deb Smith, aye.
Sunhee, aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye. The minutes from have been approved as amended for August 19th. Okay, so now it's 7:15. And I, we're, I'd like to bring the public hearing to order. I, if people have questions, it might be best if you wait until after we've gone through the presentation. And you, and I'm going to turn it over to Mariah, who has put a lot of work into preparing for this summary of the changes. We're looking for the planned unit developments and the zoning changes to the map. So I'll turn it over to Mariah and if you could, she'll let you know how to ask questions for the meeting.
Hi, I'm Mariah Kurtz. I'm, I haven't met any of you before. Currently, the planning board is proposing some zoning amendments, including zoning map updates adding a planned unit development overlay district to the zoning map. I'm about to do a presentation which will explain what these changes are. At the end of the presentation, we'll open it up for for public comments and questions. And I can show you how to virtually raise your hand or type questions into the comment box. So why are these changes being proposed? It's for a variety of reasons, including to better match existing development patterns, encouraging commercial or residential development in the appropriate places, offering more options to developers, which lend themselves to larger scale development or commercial development in certain areas. And then having our zoning encourage aesthetically pleasing development, which takes into account multiple modes of transportation and environmental considerations. I've been working hard for over a year now on these updates, including other updates that we, that they may propose in. So these have been very well thought out and talked through. I hope that some of you have had a chance to look at this material already, either online on the website where it was posted or at Town Hall. The public library, there's copies of the presentation. There's large zoning maps for you to look at and a few other supplementary materials. And if anyone wants a copy of any of this after the meeting, I'm happy to send it out to for registered for the presentation tonight. I'm going to skip this for now. So the first change on the map, the zoning map that is proposed is changing the name of the French King District, which is abbreviated with the letter K, to the French King District, which is abbreviated with FK. This just clarifies a little bit. It's a little bit confusing that it's not only commercially used in the French King District. So the planning board decided that they'd like to clarify that and simplify it. And this this edge of the French King and PUD District will be set back a little bit from where it was in the original. On the left side, this is the current map. And then on the right side, this is the proposed map. So you'll see that the gap between the Connecticut River and this edge of zone, which is pink, has grown a little bit and that is because that land is, and even though it wouldn't matter if the land was zoned, it wouldn't be developed. That it looked a little bit cleaner to addition of the PUD, which is the red lines, is the Planned Unit Development Overlay District. I will explain in a little bit. Calling in on their phone, if you could just yourself on your phone. And then we'll ask comments at the end of the presentation. That would and I do see a hand raised from Rebecca Hubbard. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to wait until the end of the presentation to call on you. So the next area that had some changes, again, on the left side, this is the current map. You'll see that this is Ripper Road. If you imagine the police station is up here, the DPW over here. The easternmost side of the road was zoned and the western side was a zone for a residential. The planning board discussed this and felt like it should be symmetrical on both sides. And it's already developed in a very village residential fashion, which is relatively small lot sizes, mostly residential uses. So they decided to have both sides be village residential to match. This is the river Strashen in Warner Streets area. The, this is the river with the bridge over to Miller's This is Renovator Supply right here. The current map, where you'll see there's rural zoning, which is this white color, which covers most of the neighborhood. And then the Renovator Supply area in one side of Gunn Street was Central Village, which is the yellow color. And then one side of Gunn Street was Village Residential. First, the planning board thought that it made sense to have both sides of Gunn Street be zoned to the same thing. And so that was changed to Village Residential on both sides. The Renovator Supply, currently the Renovator Supply Parcels Village and added a Planned Unit Development Overlay District. The other areas along these streets were changed to Village Residential. These properties are currently developed in that fashion, which I described earlier, which is mostly residential use, smaller parcels. It's not really developed in a rural residential fashion and doesn't really meet the criteria or the intention of the rural residential district. Excuse me. I think that covers that area. On some of the maps, there are, on one section of the map, there's better dimensions of what this CV and PUD extent did extend a little bit north to cover the currently developed areas. So that, the developed area actually goes farther beyond what someone could see on the public way. And so the planning board made the decision after a site visit that the Planned Unit Development Overlay District and the Central Village should extend to what is currently developed or previously developed there. This is the Care Drive area way. So if you imagine the elementary school is here where it says Grueling Drive, that is the elementary school driveway. Next to it is the new library and the senior center is this parcel right here. This proposes to extend Central Village to cover the elementary school parcels and all the way through to the senior center parcel, as well as across the street to match. They felt like this was really matching the intention of the current development patterns over there and offered ideas for future development. The Planned Unit over, the Planned Unit Development Overlay District also covered those same parcels. This is a section along Route 2 here. This is the former IP Mill with the bridge that goes over to Miller's Falls, Montague. This proposes adding the Planned Unit Development Overlay District to what is IP Mill property, as well as extending, you'll see the yellow, which is Central Village, on the north side of the road. It extends over here. So we're proposing to extend the Central Village to match both sides of the road here. Again, you know, trying to match where neighborhoods are developed or offer the same development opportunities on both sides of the road. We're now switching to Irving Center. So this is the westernmost edge of Irving Center. This is the edge of Central Village, which follows what I believe is an intermittent stream or what was an intermittent stream. The planning board decided to clean up that boundary a bit by just squaring it off. Also in Irving Center is the northeasternmost section of Central Village along Route 2. So this is near the State Forest. I mean, if you imagine that the Irving Paper Mill down here. There was a decision to, again, square this off a little bit more easy to see where the boundary of the State Forest is. Again, zoning doesn't override any conservation restrictions. Likely that the State Forest would ever be developed. But they felt like it cleans the map up to have that squared off there and end before the State Forest. The PUD is also added to property that is currently Irving Paper or they have as part of the mill complex. Again, on both sides of the street. This is going up North Street up to Swamp Road. This is, this, all this green is Village Residential District. And again, squaring this off to match the State Forest, so that it's a bit cleaner when you look at it. Other than that, nothing's changed here. At the Swamp Road intersection, again, it squares off. And then these are just excerpts from the current zoning bylaw that talks about when boundary lines divide a lot and the dimensional schedule. So those are offered in this packet as supplementary information. And then the Planned Unit Development that we showed on locations here is an overlay district, which is optional for developers to opt in when they're, when they're proposing a development. I usually describe it as campus style development. So if you imagine a college or a mill build or a mill complex, where there are multiple buildings on one parcel that are all the same owner, but maybe have compatible but different uses. And they are, they have a comprehensive aesthetic. They work well together. There's a common driveway that they all share. And the site is planned as one site, but has multiple buildings and uses happening. Traditional zoning that we currently have does not allow for multiple buildings on one parcel. So you lose some of that connectivity and efficiency that you have with that. So this proposed Planned Unit Development, which we've called PUD, it encourages flexibility in design. But it also offers a controlled process for the planning board to have oversight. And it is a optional process. So a developer could come in and say, we want to follow traditional zoning. That's fine with us. They do not have to follow this. However, if they were choosing to develop a property in one of the areas that the PUD, excuse me, is being proposed in, such as along Care Drive or at the IP Mill, they would be able to opt into this. It promotes the reuse of historic structures and the use of multiple story buildings. So again, imagine the IP Mill and how there are multiple buildings on that complex. It encourages less sprawl. So you're using land more efficiently. You're having shorter streets and utilities and it's consuming less of the land. It provides an efficient procedure so that there is a high quality design and site plan at the end of the process. And it promotes highly coordinated building designs, which buffers adjacent residential uses and protects scenic and natural features. And then lastly, it maximizes pedestrian circulation and multimodal circulation. So there would be one driveway that goes from the main way to the complex. And then there may be some parking areas or bus stops, bike racks off of that that kind of connect to certain buildings. But from the public way, there is only one connection. Again, this would only be applicable in in the areas that the Planned Unit Development Overlay is shown on the map, which is the red hash marks. There are dimensional requirements. So the parcel, say someone bought one of the parcels that is currently in the PUD and they wanted to subdivide it. There are minimum lot sizes and frontage amounts that would be required to do, to follow the PUD. I believe that is most of it. There are design requirements which are more specific, such as having parking areas located to the side or rear of buildings as possible. Mechanical equipment being screened from the, from the public view when possible. Having signs be consistent and the aesthetic being consistent. Having human scale features, which means when you're walking through the development, things are at the size of a pedestrian rather than, say, a large car or having large walls that don't have any windows or doors or features that are appealing as you walk around. And then they need to have an integrated design and have all the pieces work together. The rest is all procedural, which folks are able to look through at their leisure. Again, if folks are interested, I'm happy to send this out. It's also available at Town Hall and the library for people to review. And lastly, I'll just show, this is the proposed map with all of the proposed changes, also shown at Town Hall and the library. Did I forget anything, planning board, before it is opened up to?
No, I think you did a good job, Mariah. Thank you.
Thanks, Mariah. Before you open it up, are you able to change our setting so that we can see attendees and the questions that are coming in?
I'm not sure. I don't, I think it might only be for organizers. I'm not positive. While you guys do things, I will try. All right. I think I just made you an organizer, Deb. If you want to check and see if you can see things, I can see if I can make other folks organizers.
I can. Thank you.
Okay, so I can make everyone an organizer so that they can see what's going on. Oh, there might be a limit. Shoot.
It might be good if Sunhee could get him, because she's taking the minutes.
Oh, here we got it. Okay, that should be everyone on the, yeah, that should be everyone. Okay. Do you want to open it up for comments, Mike?
So please, anybody who has any comments, this is a good time to ask them to the planning board or, and we'll try to answer them. I'm, I'm not very good with my computer, so I'll leave it up to somebody else. I haven't found the chat room yet. So, all right.
So there is one question. Do you, do you want me to try to, do you want me to read them and you can try to answer them? Or do you want me to just go ahead and read them and answer them?
You can read and answer if you're comfortable with it, or we can try if you're not.
Okay, so this is a question from Brandon Braille. Something I had noticed, Mariah, was a parcel located on Flag Hill. It appeared that it is split with two different types of zoning. That seems odd, but I am hoping to get some clarification. If we are following lot lines along the State Forest, why not there? And I'm going to zoom in because I don't remember all of the things. And if anyone wants to, to start answering that question while I find it, go ahead. Overall, I'll say we, we didn't follow boundary lines for proper, for properties other than very large ones like the State Forest, which are easy because it's a huge parcel. So, and the reason for that is it is extremely challenging on a map to find each parcel line and those parcel lines change over time. So as soon as someone changes their, their property, then your zoning map is still out of whack. It's probably the best way I would describe it. So we didn't, although we initially, at least when I was initially researching this, I thought that following all of the property lines would be the, the best and clearest way to do this. I soon learned that that is not common practice because lot lines change all the time. And so it's actually recommended that you do more like here, where it's like 1,000 feet from a main road or some kind of a feature that is unlikely to change. And that way, you're not having to change your zoning map every time someone, you know, with a private transaction changes their land. I don't, I hope that that answers the question. I don't know if anyone from the planning board would also like to chime in with that.
I'm not sure which lot, could you find Flag Hill on the map?
I think it's here. And Brandon did respond. Understood. Thank you. So I think that it's over here.
Yeah, I don't think you made any changes to that area, I don't believe.
Right. And I think that that is what he was asking was if we made changes elsewhere along, along a property line, why didn't we do it there specifically? But it was only a few instances where it was like the State Forest or we were ending a district. If, if it's okay, it looks like David Brule has his hand up and I will unmute him. David, you should be free to speak.
Okay, let me know if you can hear me. Yes. Okay, can we look at the neighborhood down near Renovators? I just have a few clarifying questions.
Making my way across town. Is this what you're talking about, your neighborhood, David?
Yep, yep, about my neighborhood. So just, just a, an observation, it looks like you have somehow connected River Street and Warner Street on your map, which is not, there's no connection there.
I believe that is the, you're talking about the purple and blue lines?
Yeah, yeah.
I believe it does actually sewer and water. And the top lines are the road. So I think that's what I was wondering.
It's misleading because it looks like a loop.
Yeah.
All right. So obviously, what I'm, what I'm really interested in is the reason for proposing this Renovators section. Is there another phase to your plan in terms of using a building on that Renovator Supply? And I have just obviously concerns about, about that. What's, what's behind the change in this vicinity?
Would you, planning board, would you like me to try to answer that? And then you can all chime in if there are further comments?
Yeah, go ahead, please, Mariah.
Okay, so like I said earlier about the Planned Unit Development, the idea is to promote campus style development. And the, we have several mill buildings in town. So all, all three of the So all, all three of the, you know, standing mills are now under the PUD. So Renovator Supply area, the former IP Mill and Irving Paper, along with Care Drive and the, the French King District. So there are, in none of those locations are there, there imminent redevelopment plans except for the IP Mill, which the town has been trying to redevelop since it came into our hands. The purpose is to provide opportunity for developers in the future, whether the, the current landowners or a developer who comes in to purchase land, you know, in the future, to provide opportunity to either reuse existing buildings. So in the cases of many of the mill buildings, they're already set up as a campus. There's already multiple buildings. Some of them are connected by catwalks or tunnels. Some of them are separate buildings entirely. Would not be allowed under traditional zoning. And so the idea is to allow that style of development to continue in a way that the planning board still has control over. And all zoning, any, any building that is being constructed near sensitive area that the Department of Environmental Protection governs has to go through the DEP permitting process. Zoning does not affect that. It just talks about uses in districts. So if, if you're, if that is what you're concerned about, because you said that you were concerned about development in this area, and I don't know, you know, whether that was your concern or just as a, and a butter. But I know that this neighborhood is obviously very close to the river. Any development that happens, you know, within the confines of the Welling Protection Act still needs to be permitted through that.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I was more, I was more concerned in, in making evident to the planning board about the density of habitation we already have here in this neighborhood. It's probably unlike the other proposals you're planning on the French King or near the, near the paper mills. This, you know, there's a, there's a, a large number of people and houses on, on these streets. And I'm just concerned about obviously what has been spoken of, perhaps unofficially and maybe erroneously, but developing one of those buildings for, you know, what would I call it? Accommodations for new residents. And I'm just very concerned about the layout of our, of our neighborhood here, which is a pretty tight little spot. It's got one road in and one road out. It's the same road. Adding, if, if your, your plan down the line is to turn one of those buildings on the Renovators property into dwelling apartments, that I would just, as a, as an butter, I just have a lot of concerns about that. That sounds to me like that's the ulterior motive in this, in this section. At least to all of my neighborhood, that's what it feels like to us. It's, it's just a query, just questioning, but I want to bring to the attention that this is a, a very compact, dense neighborhood as it is. With that one street, Stretchin' Street, apparently being the only access to that lower building. Which, you know, is problematic for, for those of us living in, in that particular spot. So I hope that down the line would be taken into consideration. I can see over at the International Paper Mill or whatever might happen up on the French King. That is basically, there, there is no neighborhood there right now. Whereas this is, this is a very historical section of town. Obviously with a lot of buildings that used to be the Miller's Falls Company. So I just, you know, that was basically my concern, as in a butter, as a resident here, as a multi-generational presence here, I'm just concerned about my neighborhood.
I appreciate your comment. I, I would like to clarify something or two things. One is that I take a little bit of offense to the term ulterior motive, because I think we're, I personally am being very clear about what is being proposed. And the town does not currently own the property, nor does it have control over this property. But more importantly, that housing is already allowed at this property. It's already zoned CV. The planned unit development is only one development option. If the current owner of this, of any of the buildings on that lot wanted to turn it into anything allowed under Central Village, including housing or commercial use or light industrial use, they could do so as long as they met building code. So this isn't changing that being allowed. It's only offering one form of that, and it actually probably offers more control than what is currently offered. Because when, it would force the developer, if they chose to do this, to have one entrance in and out of the property and follow all of the other, you know, rules that are outlined. That area, like you said, it is dense. Those buildings have been there for a long time. And if, if in the future, any developer who owns that property decided to increase the use of that building or those buildings, there may need to be infrastructure increases such as the sewer. And oftentimes, when, if a developer is proposing those increases, they will contribute part of that cost or all of the cost to make those upgrades. I hope that that addresses some of your concerns.
Yeah, thank you. It, it, all of this, I'm, I'm coming new to the discussion and it was very helpful, your, your clarifications there. So I, I just needed to perhaps diffuse some concerns also that I have that other neighbors have. But I understand better now, which is fine. Good, okay, I wanted to kind of air that to find out what the planning board had in mind. And apparently, to, to be sure, I understand you are adding, I would like to think, additional planning options, guidance on these areas. Is that what I'm hearing? Is that you, you want more clarifications and perhaps more guidance to a potential developer?
Yeah, I think thinking of it as like a tool in the toolbox that someone can choose to use is, is a good analogy. Yeah, it's optional, so no one has to follow the PUD if they choose not to.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I recommend, you know, and I, I know, David, I appreciate that you're, you're speaking for not only yourself, but also some concerns that you've heard from your neighbors. If, if you or any of your papers have questions about what current zoning says or allows, I'm happy to talk to anyone. The zoning bylaws are posted on the town website. And you can go to the use table and it will tell you what VR Village Residential or CV Central Village allows currently. That will tell you, you know, the, the parameters of what could currently go there.
Okay, great, thank you. I appreciate this. I, as I said, I'm, I'm coming new to this and I appreciate this opportunity to, to exchange information with you. And yeah, I'll, I'll begin following up, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, David. Mariah, before we go on to the next person, we had a question in the beginning from Becky Hubbard, before we forget her.
Sorry, Becky.
Becky, I will unmute you. You should be able to talk.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Deb. My question, or my comment was that Mariah kept going in and out and I couldn't hear everything she was saying. It wasn't a comment about what the proposals or the, what the planning board was planning. But I will say this, I'll make a comment. I want to thank you for the work that you have done on this. I know there was a lot and you thought about it. But I also want to say thank you for putting the information at the library. I thought it was very good. That's where I happened to view it. But I think it was an, another good resource for people to go to. So I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Was there, you mentioned that I was going in and out. Was there anything in particular that you felt like you missed that you'd like me to go back and explain?
No, that's all right. It was just the ends of your sentences were going up. I don't know if it was because you turned your head or something, but I mean, I caught up. But in the beginning, I wasn't sure how it was going to be, so, but it's fine.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more questions or comments coming in. Is anyone else? Nope, I was actually just going to say if, maybe this will be our last call for questions or comments. And if not, we can close the public hearing and move on with the rest of our agenda, if Mike's okay with that.
I have one question. Sorry, it came to my mind when we were looking at this again. But the paper mill on the, in the main part of town, the PUD is on both sides of Route 2. And I thought it had to be on just one side of the road.
No, it's on both because it covers, so the current, what, what people currently think of as the mill is, is down here. And then there's also a parcel across the street that is part of the mill, but there is currently nothing up there. And so it is, it is on both sides of Route 2.
But I, I'm sorry, but I thought by definition it had to be on one side of the road.
The, the district can cover a whole swath of land. If you're talking about a development, there would obviously be one driveway off of one direction of the road. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm getting to, yeah. So the, the, the side, that is Route 2, the dark line that I see there, or, or not?
Yeah.
So there's very, that left side of the PUD isn't usable, the below. The, I'm, I'm making an observation that I, I don't think that's, the PUD probably should just be north of the Route 2, not south of Route 2. I'm not sure if that even meets the definition that, you know, of the PUD, south of Route 2.
I mean, I'm not sure off the top of my head. I, I think it currently does. I think it meets the-
Can we check on, can we check on that before the, it has to have enough to, what is it, two acres of land? Does it, you know, make sure it has that? And then it does have enough frontage.
Well, the whole, I mean, the whole mill is on the south side of Route 2. So I believe it would have to have at least two acres because that mill is pretty large. But whether or not a specific parcel is meets the requirements, I mean, the, the district can cover all kinds of parcels, whether or not that specific parcel meets the requirement, because someone may expand or contrast, you know, the, the parcels can change over time. So we picked this area because it is all currently mill area. And that, that was why it was on both sides. The, the mill, you know, when you're driving on Route 2, the north side is wooded, the south side is the actual mill that you can see. Oh, and it looks like Morris House has his hand up. And I can Morris, you should be unmuted.
Good evening, Mariah. Thank you. Excellent presentation. Can you hear me okay? All right, good. So I sort of, I think I might have the opposite question on that PUD. And you're right, 99%, though the mill does have a fire north of Route 2. I think our ray, we've got a, that's where the radio tower is and there's the cell tower. So there are a couple of things up there that are, it's not just forest. But my question is more, is there any reason that the PUD, the parcel of land extends, I believe it's a, it's 100 acres up into the forest? Any reason why the PUD stopped where it did and that it wouldn't go further? Or is that sort of, is that arbitrary?
We, we wanted to keep it to the Central Village portion of the zoning. Not, that, that was why it stopped at Central Village.
Okay.
In all the districts, Morris, where we're putting, where we're suggesting the PUD, we've actually pretty much followed the boundaries of the existing. So over in French King, it's the existing French King District. So we tried to do that evenly across all three.
Okay, that, yep, that sounds fine. That was only, I was curious.
And then it looks like we have a question from Philip Johnson. Will the proposed areas by, by Paper Mill have an access road from Prospect Street Extension? I live on Prospect Heights Lane. And I, without knowing all of my streets, unfortunately, off the top of my head, I believe that's over here. But I, the, the proposed planned unit development does not come with any, any development with it, so there is no access road being currently proposed or any, any buildings that are proposed. My expectation would be that if the planned unit development was proposed to the planning board from a developer, that they would request that traffic does not go up onto Prospect Heights Lane, that they would ask there to be a connection to Route 2 where possible. So there would be opportunity then for abutters and neighbors to come to the planning board meetings to discuss what is appropriate for that area. I hope, I hope that makes sense.
Could, Mariah, I think, I think he's talking about the IP, no, the Prospect, I think that's Prospect Street at the other end of town. So.
I, Prospect Heights, isn't that over here? Yes, Prospect Heights is over by Zelinsky Field. Yeah, so, okay, yeah, so, so Philip said thank you. I think that's what he was talking about.
Well, if there's no further comments or questions, I'd like to bring the, the public hearing section of the meeting to a close. Make a motion.
You need to vote to, you know, yeah, sorry. So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing at 7:57 PM.
I'll second. Roll call, please. All in favor?
Deb Smith, aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye.
Sunhee, aye.
That's unanimous. Can we, I guess, go to finish up the minutes of the meeting, the, the two meetings? We did August, we need to do September and October.
I do not have October's done. This, I believe, is the September minutes.
Okay. So we approve the PUD. The draft zoning that- The draft zoning map we approved. We, we did have, we were invited to a planning, a select board meeting where they added the, um, the PUD for the, um, school and, and library and senior center. That's, that was an additional PUD that we didn't originally have. I don't have any corrections. Uh, anybody else? I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for September 16th as submitted.
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mike Schaefer, aye. Okay, thank you. So we're through the minutes, and then we'll do next, the minutes, Deb's minutes, next meeting. Okay. Discuss next steps for annual town meeting. It's, I think, this, this may be, I don't know if what we just went through will be at a special town meeting or an annual town meeting for the PUD and zoning. Maybe, Mariah, you've been putting some timetables together. Do you know what we'll probably do?
Um, so it's up to the select board when the town meeting is held. I don't know what they're currently planning. If I had to speculate, I think it would be February. Um, but your part, the planning board's part in, in this, um, in these amendments that are proposed is done, except for if you'd like to write a report. Um, you're, you're all allowed to submit a, a report from the planning board stating your opinions or endorsing this, basically. Um, because you proposed it, um, it might not be as relevant. But when you see like the warrant for the meeting, it'll say that it was like submitted by the planning board. And then there's an option for residents to, you know, if, if you choose to have a report for residents to then view that. Other than that, um, your part in this is done. You just wait for, uh, the select board to, um, schedule the meeting and put this on the warrant. Um, and then once there is a vote at town meeting on these, then there is more paperwork to do, um, to send this all to the Attorney General's Office, uh, if it passes. So actually, I included in here, this is Form 7. Um, which is the form that we give to the Attorney General's Office at the end of this all, and it has all of the dates that were required to meet, excuse me, um, with the attachments that are required. So I filled this in so far, um, with what I believe are accurate dates, and I need to go back and double check them, but, um, basically, this is saying, you wrote up the original proposal and gave them to the Board of Selectmen on October 21st. Um, and then November 1st is when they submitted them back to you. Um, and then I published the, uh, legal ads in the newspaper, um, November 3rd and November 10th. And then, um, the notice, um, at Town Hall, which was posted, was posted October 28th. And then I believe it was November 4th that I sent out, um, the mailings to DHCD, the Regional Planning Board, and abutting cities and towns. I need to double check that date. Um, there were no non-resident property owners who filed requests with the town clerk. Um, and then you had your public hearing just now, so the next step is the town meeting vote. Um, and then either an oral or written report, so if you would all like to offer a report at town meeting, and then I would, we would attach copies of all of these things, and then, um, the town clerk signifies that, um, they believe that this is accurate and that no unfavorable action was taken on any of the above articles. And then we submit it to the Attorney General, and my understanding is that they review it, and, um, then we move on.
If, if people have concerns at the public hearing, how does that get relayed to the select board, or? Do, does that go in the, should we put that in a report, like, I, David Broll had concerns about, I think, the road, the congestion, congestion in that area, and extra traffic that could, you know, I just want to make sure we capture that somewhere. Where, where does that get captured?
Um, I think it could be captured in a presentation. You know, we're allowed to do a presentation at the town meeting. Um, it could be addressed there. It's addressed in the minutes, which, uh, Son Hee is taking. Um, if, if there are changes that need to be made, that's a different process. I think, I think those are the options.
Mike, I'm just gonna say, I, I understand David's concern, but I think that's not, I feel the select board needs to know that, that a citizen was concerned, but I think a lot of his concerns come with stuff that is outside of the planning board's control. And there are concerns that could happen right now with the current owner of the property. Um, so I'm a little less worried about making sure that, you know, everyone is, it's in the minutes.
Well, I just like, with, like. Yeah. As long as it gets communicated to, you know, that it was a concern, not, we're not gonna take action on it, but it's a concern. That's all I wanna be.
You're able to, if you'd like to email the select board, you're, you're able to do that. There's no, I don't think there's like a formal option, because really, because you proposed this, they were really the pass-through to recommend it back to you. Um, so if you would like to write a memo to inform them of how the special hearing went, they might be interested in reviewing that. Um, but I think that that is, that is maybe what, what the solution to that is.
I didn't hear any other real concerns. If I do write a email, did anybody else that I should include in it?
Well, I mean, I guess, I wonder if our next step then maybe should be, we just write up a, a brief, I, I guess, report is the proper word to use. Uh, maybe just telling the Board of Selectmen that our public hearing has been held. Um, this was a concern that was expressed at the meeting, and that we would like, you know, we're kind of asking them, you know, our part is done, and could you please put this on the next meeting warrant? Um, and, you know, and maybe that would cover all bases. That way, they know we're done, they know we've done our share. Um, they will hear that their, a concern had been expressed, um, and they'll know that we're asking them to move, you know, to move this forward at the next meeting that they see fit.
All right, I can put together an email.
I think that's a good solution, Deb.
Okay, um. So the next step, uh, this is how, I'm gonna turn it over to Mariah, but this is fairly complicated. I, I wish Janice were here. But maybe, could you, uh, the, the select board has made a request to the planning board to amend a use table. And, uh, I'll let Mariah explain why.
Sure, so, uh, the select board submitted, um, a post zoning amendments to you all. Um, which you all went through this process where you submitted them to the select board, and then they submitted them to you. Um, there's multiple ways that zoning amendments can be proposed. One is the way that you just did it. One is, um, residents, let's see, there's a whole, there's a whole list. Uh, a proposal may be initiated by the select board, the zoning board, city council, an individual who owns land who could be affected by the proposal, 10 or more registered voters for an annual town meeting, or 100 registered voters, blah, 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 10 registered voters in a city, planning board, regional planning agency, other methods. So there's a whole bunch of ways that zoning amendments can be proposed. The select board chose to, um, propose one, and what happens is the same thing that you all did, where they propose it to you, and you're, um, obligated to then schedule a public hearing within 65 days of receiving that. So I sent you their letter today, which is this one. And it's from the select board to the planning board, asking to amend the use table and one definition. So, um, the use table, uh, changes are, um, consistent with the ones that you all had actually already talked about in previous meetings. You just hadn't chosen to move forward with them yet. Um, and it is changing, um, the terms, single family, two-family, multifamily, to single unit dwelling, two-unit dwelling, multi-unit dwelling, which is just a semantics change to reflect that, um, a single unit dwelling might not house one family, and that the town is not in a position to define what one's family is. The other changes are, um, changing the requirement in Central Village and Village Residential, um, for two-family housing to go from special permit to just outright, you can build two-family dwellings, or two-unit dwellings, excuse me. Um, and then, um, allowing multi-unit dwellings by special permit across the board. You can't see it because the edits got, um, they were changed around, but I believe right now it is special permit in Village and no for the rest of them. And then, I, so I realized when I was looking through this, and I can explain more context as to why, but when I was looking through the zoning bylaws the other day, I realized that there is just no zoning that covers dwellings with more than four units. Somehow, the last time the zoning was written, they just never covered that. It was only three to four units tops, and then they just never addressed it. Um, I think everyone just assumed, when they saw multi-unit dwelling, like I did, that it covered three-plus units. So the definition is currently, a dwelling containing three but not more than four dwelling units separated by vertical walls or horizontal floors, designed for occupancy by not more than four families. And then there was nothing else addressing, you know, dwelling units beyond that, which would be like an apartment building. Um, so the select board is proposing the amendment to change it to a definition for multi-unit dwelling, which is a dwelling containing three or more units separated by vertical walls or horizontal floors, and having it be special permit across the board. The background to how we, how the select board came to this, and, and I recommended this change to the select board, is because currently, the select board has a request for proposal out for 18 Pleasant Street, potentially to include the, um, old library building, so the old graded school and the old library building, maybe. And because I have had my head in the zoning map for a year and didn't look up and didn't breathe, I didn't realize that the 18 Pleasant Street building and the old library building are in VR and not CZ. Um, and multi-unit dwellings are just straight up not allowed in, um, Village Residential, which, because you had already proposed the changes to have it be special permit across the board, in my mind, it was already that way. So we didn't realize until last week, or the week before, that that was the case. Um, and we're expecting that many of the proposals will include, for the redevelopment of that building, will include housing, and most likely, more than three units. Um, and so the select board considered especially that you all had already discussed these changes, and, um, even though you hadn't proposed them right now, that you were, um, you had already voted on the use table, and were planning to move forward with this eventually, that in the interest of speeding up the process and making sure that the, uh, request for proposal was, um, advantageous for a developer, um, to make these changes now, and to change the definition to match. So all that being said, now you need to schedule another public hearing.
Mariah, let me ask you something, 'cause you kinda just hit on something that I was thinking. We've already voted on the entire use table. So I understand the select board sent a request for this section, but can we just hold our public hearing for the whole use table? Because we've already voted on it.
Um, I, I wondered the same thing when I made this recommendation, and the reason that I made the recommendation to only do these three was because you haven't totally defined your, um, accessory dwelling units yet, which is part of the use table. And so I didn't wanna hold up the conversation. Also, that is potentially a controversial, potentially, I don't think, I actually don't think it will be, but it could be a controversial subject. And so I don't think that these changes will be particularly controversial to anyone. Um, and so I think it's, in my mind, the simplest recommendation was to do this. Um, you could, if you wanted to go through the process of trying to, to do the whole use table, you could offer a proposal to the select board. Um, and then they would, you know, again, give it back to you, and you would hold a, um, a public hearing.
Okay, let me ask you if this would work. I'm kinda thinking, what if we did the whole use table pulling out the ADUs? Because we do think there might be, I'm with you, I don't necessarily think they're gonna be that controversial, but they could be. So what if we did this one, um, I believe the, the schedule you suggest, you sent and suggested would be for December? Because then we could actually send the PUD, the zoning map, and the use table to a town meeting, potentially in February. And then it would give us a little bit more time if we took the, the ADUs out to work on those ADU developments, and then we could propose an amendment just for the ADUs. Can I complicate it any further?
Let me pull up the, um, the draft that you all have going, so that, uh, you can all look at. Let's see. I, so I will say, I'm a fan of keeping it as least complicated as possible, but I also understand wanting to just make moves on the use table. Um, let me, where am I?
I just kinda feel like if we've already voted on the use table, it's kinda just sitting there like, hey, what about me?
Forgotten about.
Yes. We put the use table in the corner, darn it.
Let's see.
The only other area that's kinda controversial is the medical marijuana, all the marijuana stuff. I, I, I know you don't think it will be, but it could be.
That's true. That is another one that could be, that, that's where there are some substantial changes. Um, yeah, it's really these, and then the ADUs, I think. I don't think there's, yeah. Um, but you could break apart the marijuana updates and the ADUs if you wanted to, but I, um, I'm trying to think, I guess, there might not be any other changes. I think we just got rid of pins.
Yep, there was that one.
Oh, and then we changed retail stores, marijuana product stores from, and in French King District to special permit.
Yep, but that, to me, that falls all under the marijuana. Mike, I totally see your point with the marijuana. I do think, knowing how Irving voted as a whole, I don't necessarily think it's gonna be super controversial, but I think if we did it at the, um, at a public hearing in December, just with the use table as a whole, I mean, our hearing tonight was only about 40 minutes. So I think people will come, I, I would love to see how many people we had tonight. And I think maybe then we would have that, you know, we'd be able to have that discussion.
So Deb, my only concern.
No, you can't have concerns.
My whole life is a series of concerns. Um, the timeline that I showed you is very tight, which you wouldn't have to, you're, so you're legally obligated. The timeline that I showed you is very tight, which you wouldn't have to, you're, so you're legally obligated to address this within sixty-five days. I believe the select board at this point could retract it if they felt it was in the best interest of everyone. So your, I did the math earlier, what, okay, hold on, let me pull this up so I can look at it. The timeline for advertising these changes is super tight. If you try to do it in December, at your regular meeting, I'm just going to pull up my email because that's faster.
What if we did it in January? And then at our December meeting, we could give it, we could give the use table as a whole just one more quick glance, make sure we're all okay with where everything is.
Well, you would actually, you would have to decide that tonight. So that's the problem with this, is if you do it, your regular monthly meeting, it takes about, like, a little over a month to do the whole process legally, and that's in a tight timeline. So you, so the next select board meeting would be the twenty-ninth, I believe. November twenty-ninth. So you would have to decide tonight to send to have them consider, to send your use table to the select board, have them send it back to you, vote to send it back to you on the twenty-ninth. And then at the, let's see, then at your meeting on the sixteenth, you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to talk about, I mean, you could talk about it, but you wouldn't be able to have a public hearing because I wouldn't have time to advertise for you. So you would have to have your public hearing in, I mean, you could obviously schedule a time that's not your usual time. But if you wanted to stick to your usual schedule, you would have to have it at the January twentieth meeting. I believe that Brian just pushed out the deadline for the RFP to the twenty-seventh. I think. Once you've scheduled the public hearing, my understanding is that the changes are kind of in process anyways. So that wouldn't be too much of an issue.
I was going to ask you that, Mariah. I thought it wasn't, I thought the changes didn't, that didn't happen until the town voted on it.
I am going to be honest that I do not totally understand the legalities of it. I have been told that, and I'm sure that this is super complicated, because, I mean, there's tons of case law about zoning generally. So I'm sure it's much more specific than this.
Yeah.
I've been told that as soon as the the public hearing is scheduled, that they kind of become in effect. I don't know what happens if someone starts a project, then, uh, under these new guidelines, and then it's ultimately voted down. I'm not sure what happens in that case.
Yeah, that's, I, I swore that in the past Jackie had said it was once the town vote, once it went to town meeting, and if it was voted yes, then they were kind of de facto in place.
The attorney general can, really, we have to get their approval before they're in place.
Yeah, but there's a point where, at one stage, they are actually considered in effect unless the AG kicks them back and says no.
I, I guess I'd like to try to keep it simple for this upcoming one. With the holidays and everything else. If we can get this multi-unit dwelling in place for December.
Deb, if you have to, because you're gonna, if you, hold on, start over. You're going to have to do the use table in at least two parts anyways, given what we're currently talking about. So does it matter if we do the current single-family proposal? And then, once you get your ADUs settled, then you do the rest of it, which is mostly the marijuana bylaws, the ADUs. And then like that one or two other little changes, like the retail store. Because you're going to have to break it apart anyways.
Yeah, no, I'm good with whatever works the best. I just, we're checking stuff off the list, so I like that, so I want to keep checking.
It feels good to calm something off.
You have a better chance of getting this through, you know, quickly. Than if you don't, like Mariah said, if you keep it simple and don't combine it with other things, you know. I did look in the definitions at the back of those zoning bylaws need to be all updated too, Mariah. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at those. But for, for the definition of, you know, families in there, delete that and, and dwelling unit.
Okay, um, do you, Mike, do you mind going through and noting anything you noticed that needs to be changed? That would be helpful to me.
I can try. I, I'm not, I think, does some, do you have a, I don't have the capability. Can you go through and search for family in the, the whole thing? And, and do it that way?
Yeah, I can definitely do that. If you happen to go, if you go through the definitions and you notice anything that's not like the word family that needs to be updated, just send them over to me and at the, I can, I can put proposed language in there. And at the meeting, you can all review that and make sure that it's the language that you'd like.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll do that. No, I'll go through. Is that, so should I, we make a motion to follow the suggested timeline for a public hearing on this in, at our next meeting?
I think what your motion would need to be, would be to, what date the public hearing you're scheduling is.
December eight, is it December eighteenth? Is that, or what was it? Is that what it is next Thursday? Sixteenth?
And I, I do think so, I've just, Brian did message saying if the planning board sends a proposal back to the select board, Jake is willing to discuss it on November twenty-ninth.
Yeah, I don't think I'll be here that weekend. That's, so, but we don't need to be there, do we? For a joint, does this have to be a joint meeting?
It wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be, no.
So what, I'm sorry, I can't read Brian's, no, it's too small for me.
So he just, so he was talking about how, how Deb had proposed sending a, a new proposal to the select board and having them retract their, and so he was saying that if you all choose to do that, that on November twenty-ninth, Jake's willing to discuss it, but you wouldn't, it wouldn't be a joint meeting. You would just propose it to them and then they would send it back to you.
Okay.
I mean, part of me says if they're willing to meet with us or willing to discuss it on the twenty-ninth, I would say let's send them the use table minus the ADUs. I mean, we've voted on the use table, so there's nothing else for us really to change. And then that covers pretty much everything, and that's a huge one checked off our list. I mean, that really is. And, and Mariah, I might be totally misremembering this. Don't we have to have the use table updated to along with the zoning map?
What do you mean?
I thought, and, and again, I'm, I'm, I've looked at all this stuff so much, I may be merging different conversations. I thought at one meeting, we talked something about, never mind, it's the PUD, never mind, total.
Well, that's one good point, Deb. We, we have to change three point one. It, it's, it's got the French King Commercial District C. That's got to be changed on page eleven. It's, um, it's, you know, the establishment of districts.
Oh, that's a good catch. I didn't notice that.
But that's where we would have to update to match our zoning map, I believe. Those, those need to match the map.
Yeah, and I would say you would have to hold off on your definitions, honestly, because I still, I never found a definition for the groundwater protection overlay, and I also didn't pull the definition for a floodplain district, so those two aren't ready yet.
And actually, that overlay district, we'd have to, at three point two, you've got to add the PUD into the. Did you put that, go back to the top for an overlay? Did you add PUD into that?
Um, we all, I don't, oh, this one, I see.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not that good a proof reader, but someone's really, I got to go through this with a fine-toothed comb. Did you, Mariah, I guess maybe I'm skipping ahead, but you, you were able to get a grant for someone to help us update our planning bylaws, so.
Yeah, the confetti can come out of the ceiling now. You all got a sixty thousand dollar grant for a professional who's absolutely not me, who has real zoning experience to come help you with all of this. So that's really exciting because I've enjoyed this, but I'm not a zoning expert. And so the sixty thousand dollars was awarded through the One Stop Grant Program to pay a consultant to help you do a complete zoning overhaul. And so they will be much better, I'm sure they have programs where they can, uh, you know, do extreme searches to make sure that everything matches, and they'll be able to offer you examples of kind of best practice language. So I believe that will be, you know, we've been, uh, over the past year, kind of, we picked, I think, the, the biggest things that we could address kind of in chunks. And I think that we've made a lot of progress, especially right now, as we're actually preparing, you know, to take this to, to town meeting. But they'll be able to really help you make significant changes that need to be updated, that you or I may not even know, are no longer effective with case law changes or things like that.
When, when do you think they'll be available to us?
So, the, well, they don't, we don't get like, uh, we get the funds, so we have to then procure a consultant and then they start. So I have gone to a webinar on the billing and we've been notified of our award, but we haven't actually been awarded the money yet. I believe at your December meeting, you'll probably have to look at paperwork for that. And then I imagine sometime in January, you'll be able to start the procurement for the consultant. I don't know what that procurement needs to look like. Brian would definitely have a better idea of that than I would, and there might be stipulations in the grant, I'm not sure. So I imagine sometime in February, maybe, you'll have a consultant who can come on board in February or March. And, you know, you'll, I imagine you'll send them what we currently have. And if some things are currently being reviewed at town meeting, or were just reviewed, we'll send them that. And they'll meet with you and talk about next steps for the process.
Yeah, I, I, I understand. I mean, we want to change all the numbering and all that too. That's probably what, they might be helpful in doing that. I know, Deb, I hear you wanting to go, and I'm saying, wait for some, until we get more help, but we.
Do you all want to, oh. Brian sent a message saying it would be helpful if the planning board was willing to vote to accept the sixty thousand dollar grant to authorize a signatory to sign the contracts. Okay, so maybe you all take a vote on what you want to do around scheduling a special hearing in the use table, and then after that, we can talk about the grant, and you all can make a vote if you'd like to.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to schedule the special, the public hearing for the use table amendment that the select board has requested for our December meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. So Mike, can you say that again? Mike makes the motion to amend?
Well, to have a public hearing scheduled for December sixteenth.
Mike makes the, to have a public hearing?
Right.
On December sixteenth?
To review the, uh, select board's, the selectman, uh, the select board's request to revise the use table.
To view the select board's review, the select board's revised use table?
Yeah. Is that adequate? I think that's adequate. We've got it here.
Mike makes the motion to have a public hearing on December sixteenth to view the select board's revised use table. Deb seconds?
Uh, can we just add, and the definition of multi-family housing? To that?
Yes, and definition of all the, all the.
Stable, use table and the definition.
All the unit dwelling.
Definition of multi-unit dwelling. Yes, does it sound good? I'll say that again. Mike makes the motion to have a public hearing on December sixteenth to review the select board's revised use table and the definition of multi-unit dwelling.
Yep, sounds good, and I second.
Deb seconds, I'll say aye.
I'd like to make another motion to approve the six, the sixty thousand dollar grant pursuing, hiring a consultant. Is that what Brian requested?
Yeah, so the motion should be to accept the sixty thousand dollar grant to procure the assault, uh, the consultant and authorize Brian as a signatory to sign the contracts.
Makes the motion to accept the sixty thousand to procure a.
Is owning consultant.
A zoning consultant. And to authorize Brian Smith. Brian Smith?
Yep. To sign the contracts.
Line the contracts. Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the amendments. So that was really, I think that will be helpful, you know, I, I think they, you know, they, maybe they can help give us an overall outline on how to go about what parts we should bring up first, like, Deb, I agree with you. I mean, the things that we've worked on, we should get off our plate and, and get those early. And then for the next meeting, I guess we And then for the next meeting, I guess we need to really get the accessory dwelling unit revision revisions finalized. I I know, Deb, you had some good ones. Mariah had some, but could could you send out where we're at with those, Mariah, before the next meeting? Would that be possible? For definitions, do we, do you have them or?
Um, I think I I know that Deb sent some out with an email. I think I have some, it would be helpful to me to have to meet with one of you and and maybe Deb, you'd be willing to do this, to just go through what we do have, um, to make sense of it.
Yeah, sure, I guess, um, part of me would just like some clarification from Mike as our chair as to what his, how he would like to proceed now that a consultant is coming on board, because to be honest, I don't want to keep doing a ton of work if we're not going to keep moving forward. Um, i- you know, if we're going to pause everything and wait till a consultant is on board, that's that's fine. But I don't want to keep investing a ton of time into into research and doing stuff if we're not going to keep working on stuff. Um, I don't think that's fair to to all of us, and I don't think that's fair to Mariah. Um, so I guess, Mike, I'd like to know what what you feel and what your thoughts are with this consultant coming on board.
I I think some of the changes, like the renumbering changes and all that, we probably should wait until they get on board. The uh the use table, I'm okay taking that before, you know, keep working. I, we're almost done with it. Like you said, it's not, it's really only these definitions. So I don't, and the introduction that we rewrote, kind of a purpose statement, I'd like to bring that forward and then probably get the consultant involved. Did we, I miss anything that else that we've worked on a lot? I think it's been mostly the use table, hasn't it?
Yeah, use table definitions. I'm wondering in terms of timing. Um, so you're about to schedule another public hearing, um, for December. The if the consultant comes on board in January or February, I'm imagining you're probably not going to want to have, like, how do I say this? If the consultant comes on board in January or February, does it make sense to try to spend time? You only have one or two meetings between now and then if you want to make progress on the accessory dwelling units. Like, do you, I guess what I'm asking, do you want to just wait for the consultant to then give you feedback? I don't know. I I appreciate wanting to keep the momentum going. But I also think that realistically, you're probably not going to have a lot of time after a public hearing next month. And you might have a consultant either on board or very soon to coming on board by your January meeting. I don't, I don't want to waste anyone's time, again, doing the research like Deb said. But I also understand if you want to keep at least making progress until they get on board. I don't know how long the process takes when you have a consultant helping you with this. Like, I I have no concept of whether they will work with us for four months or a year. I mean, we've seen how long it's taken just to do what what you did tonight. I imagine that a consultant moves a little quicker than, uh, you know, us trying to to patch it together. But you're also usually only meeting once a month, so it might still take, you know, that kind of several month timeframe because it's really maybe only three or four meetings. Um, I'm not sure about that.
I kind of, Deb, I would like to see us try to get the renumbering presented at annual meeting. That would be, you know, something I'd like to to help, you know, the town with the searches and everything. I, we don't have to make all the changes. You know, I think on the ones that, like the signage, we can say go go back and look at later at a later date. I don't think we're we're going to get it ready for town meeting. But we could, we could at least get the format done for town meeting and and some of the other easier things. I I I guess I don't have a clear picture, really. I I doubt if we're going to get to the site plans and the special permit section. I don't see us getting to those, really. Or we get a consultant here.
Now, the the renumbering that you're talking about, Mike, that's part of the codification process, right, Mariah? So that's not really us renumbering it. That's, if I'm understanding correctly, is that the codification process that tells us the renumbering?
It is, but you have to hold a hearing because it is, you're still amending the bylaws.
Okay.
And Brian's on here, I don't know if he has anything else to add to that. I have not been super involved in the codification process. But my understanding is that I think the consultant proposes the renumbering and then you would hold a public hearing showing the renumbering, I think is how that would work.
So it's not up to us to figure out the renumbering?
I believe that the select board would do the same thing that they just did, where they would like send over, here's the proposed renumbering plan. And then you would just hold a public hearing, I think, is how it would work. Now that we've held it, or hold it, now that we've held one public hearing, I feel like, at least on my part, I understand a lot better how it works. And so I think it's a little bit less intimidating, at least for me, to help you all hold these hearings. Like, I I get now how the advertising needs to work and what the timelines are. So I think at the beginning of this, I was feeling very apprehensive about like scheduling public hearings and how like we should try to fit as much as we possibly can into them, because like trying to hold more than one is going to be a huge pain. And I think now I feel a lot less scared of it. And so if you all want to, you know, as as you work through this kind of lump together, like you're having the conversation now, which I think is great, of which topics should be together. I think, um, I'm feeling less nervous about actually hosting them. They are a little bit expensive with all the advertising, so that is one consideration when you look at your budget. But, um, advertising and maps, maps are really expensive, but we already, we already did that one, so that's okay. But, yes, I I think now that you've all been through this and you're about to go through a second one, I think you guys are gonna get, um, you know, it's gonna, I think, be a little bit easier.
So I'm going to skip over the old business of updating the the site plan and special permit, but Moonlight did resign today. I don't know if Brian's aware of that, but if he's still on, but the, so he was going to the FERCog meetings. I don't know if anybody else, he was taking my place there. Is there anybody else who would like to take, go to FERCog meetings for the planning board?
I can't. I I chair the finance committee and budget season is coming. I just can't take anything else on.
Maybe Janice would like to. I don't know. We could ask her to. It's really a good learning thing, good people and there also in the spring, they have a training program that Son Hee and I went to. And I know Jackie and Bill Morris did in in Worcester at a Holy Cross. And it's, it's like a two, I think it's two day, one or two days of really intense planning subjects that people could go to if they want to. Any other topic, I guess we've kind of, the consultant, so it'd be nice if we could hire one at for our next meeting.
I will, um, I'll keep working with, um, the Rural and Small Town Development Fund or Grant is the name of the the funding that we received. I'll keep working with with their coordinators and with Brian to figure out how we actually need to procure the consultant. And as soon as we're able to, we can. I'm personally extremely busy right now with all of the infrastructure projects that we're finishing. So until the ground freezes and we're physically unable to do any more construction, I'm pretty tapped out. So I will probably not be able to work on actually getting a consultant on board and getting them up to date until that is complete.
Well, the ground is freezing next week because there's a snowstorm coming, so.
Glenn and I are going to both be up all night checking the weather, making sure that all of the roads are in plowable condition. And if not, I don't know what's going to happen.
I can only imagine. I saw them, what would like to be them pulling out a flag hill today, so.
When's it supposed to snow?
I keep hearing all kinds of things, but sometime next week.
Oh.
Hopefully, it is a dusting and that is all. I simultaneously want the ground to freeze so I can go into hibernation and not want the ground to freeze so that we can finish all of our projects.
All right, well, thank you very much for everybody and, uh, so I'd I'd make a motion to adjourn at 8:51.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Hi. All right, we'll see. And I'll get a letter out to the select board. And thank you, Mariah, for putting this together. I think you did a good job.
Thank you. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to present that. And I'm really excited about these changes. It's been, it's been a lot of fun going through this process and figuring out how to change the zoning with you all. I'll miss moving while we, while we keep moving forward.
Yeah, that's true. I would miss with Moonlight.
Yeah, I'm gonna miss Moonlight, too.
All right, thank you all.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, guys.